Is with great pleasure to call this meeting to order. If you'd like to stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for a moment of silence. The first item is to approve the agenda, and we just had one small addition. On the third page, item 13. It should read, "Approve adopting an annual option number three." So the number three was not included on the agenda. We determined there was a quorum, and is it our right with everyone to add that to the agenda? Okay. Number four is a consent agenda. We have the minutes...
With the change.
Motion Peterson.
Support.
Support Eldridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would also like to note that trustee Rowe is not here. She had a death in her family. Number four is consent agenda, the minutes of November 18th, 2025, and statements and checks.
So moved.
Motion Eldridge.
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Discussion. Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number five is the attorney's report, and under general legal update, we have a resolution, 2025-42, which is a resolution requesting the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the Michigan Strategic Fund, and the Strategic Site Readiness Program to cancel, revoke, and/or clawback immediately the $100 million grant that was previously awarded to the University of Michigan at a regular meeting of the MEDC held on December 10th, 2025, 2024. Mr. Winters... I didn't know.
So for discussion, so moved.
I'm going to chair person probably to a lot of people's delight. It's not often you have attorneys that have laryngitis, which is kind of like a centipede having sore feet. It's occupational hazard. So I'll just make a few comments tonight and let the board consider the resolution that I prepared at the board's direction. And I would just preface that with these comments, in 1987, there was a very famous movie that was made featuring Michael Douglas, and the name of the movie was called Wall Street. And in that movie, Michael Douglas played the character known as Gordon Gekko, who uttered one of the most famous lines during the 1980s, that quote, "Greed is good. Greed is good." And that argument that he made during that movie was based upon the premise that the drive for more money is a positive, life-affirming force that drives progress and success. In other words, greed is good, he argued, pushes corporations to be better, more efficient, and more successful. Well, the more things change, the more they remain the same, because here in 2025, in this resolution tonight, you have before you an opportunity to at least send a message back to Lansing, as well as the state officials, the governor's office, Congresswoman Dingle, the MEDC, MSF, ACM, everybody has their acronym, that greed is not good. It's definitely not good when it comes at the expense of Ypsilanti Township. If I can break it down in this context, the University of Michigan is one of the wealthiest universities in the country, as well as the world. In fact, it has an endowment fund of over $20 billion. It's B, billion. It's the third-largest endowment fund amongst the public universities. It's in the same category, it's behind Harvard, but it's... In other words, you get the picture. Extremely wealthy. And yet, against that backdrop of quote, "greed is good," and one of the wealthiest universities in this country, they somehow finagled, that's my word, finagled, bamboozled, whatever, the MEDC, the MSF, the Strategic Readiness Program, to approve their request for $100 million so as to entice Los Alamos to come to Ypsilanti Township and build what they don't want you to call, they don't want you to say data centers, that's what it is. We've been calling it, you know, AI intelligence, computational centers, it's a data center. And so, $100 million to the wealthiest university. And at the same time, you can juxtapose that against the hundreds of thousands of people, many of them in this township, that have lost and are going to lose their Medicaid benefits. They're losing those Medicaid benefits because of budgetary cuts at the federal level. They're also going to lose nutritional benefits, whether it's through SNAP and other programs because of budgetary cuts. So while the quote, "greed is good" for some, it comes at the expense of those who are going to be impacted in probably the most profound and negative way. Greed is not good. This township, township officials, supervisor Stumble, clerk Swanson, treasurer Eldridge, in conjunction with environmental attorney Grant Trigger and myself, have done everything possible, humanly possible, since July of this year, to have the University of Michigan engage with us as to what their plans are for these data centers. We asked them to go back and try and negotiate with ACM, and they said, "Well, we tried there for 18 months and didn't work." So we said, "Well, why don't you let us go with you? Maybe we can do what you can do, have a meaningful conversation." They said, "No, you're not invited." So it's been another six months, it's not been a full two years that this has gone on. In the meantime, we have pictures of their trucks located on the 20-acre, as well as on the 124-acre site, doing soul-borings. "We're just doing due diligence." "Well, yes, you are. You're doing due diligence. You're doing soul-borings. You got DTE ready to proceed with certain activities on that site, ITC." Again, everybody's got their acronym in regards to transmission lines. And at some point in time, you just have to recognize the obvious. And all of us, while you may not want to believe it, are being played. We're being played by the university. They have no intent whatsoever to go to ACM. So why do you think that, Mr. Winters? What makes you so clairvoyant? I'll tell you why. We have the most expert individual in the state of Michigan, perhaps maybe even in the United States, in Grant Trigger, who spent 14 years on that property as the environmental expert on behalf of racer trust. Who's racer trust? The racer trust was formed when General Motors went bankrupt, and all those contaminated properties became the owner, became under the racer trust umbrella. And the intent was to clean up those properties so they could be redeveloped and repurposed in the communities that were harmed by the General Motors closing. This township has yet to recover from the loss of the General Motors plant closing in 2008, whenever it was, because of the tremendous amount of impact it was on our SEV, not to mention Yucca Water and Sewer. And so, when the state of Michigan purchased that property through what they call the "Will Run Arsenal for Democracy," it was the intent that it be redeveloped. Only half of it has been developed, the American Center for Mobility. The rest of those acres, 150, is wide open to be developed. That is why we said, "Go to ACM. The water and sewer is there. Yucca told them you can use the, what they call the affluent, to actually cool the computers if you go there. You can't do that if you go to Bridge and Textile Road." So on Wednesday, or Tuesday last week, we had what we thought was going to be another, you know, we thought maybe a meeting, because U of M said they wanted to give us an update. So Brenda, Debbie, Stan, Grant, myself, we're all sitting around the table trying to figure out how to work the Zoom. When they finally come on, see they being Chris Colby, the vice president of government relations, Michael Rain, the director, and the professor Steve, they just looking at us like, "Okay, what do you want? Well, you called the meeting, we thought we were going to get an update." "We have no update." "Well, okay, and why are we meeting?" "Not sure. Just wanted to let you know we're still talking." So we begin to ask some questions, conversation didn't go very well after that, especially when we started asking, "Well, give me the name of the person from Los Alamos that I can talk to, since you can't talk." "Well, if you have a question, write it down, and we'll give it to them." "No, I can ask my own question. I don't need you to be a pigeon carrier and carry it forward." So at one point, as it continued to sort of go south, Chris Colby made a statement that just stuck in my mind, because it's been two years. And when asked the question as to when we're going to get any further messaging, we were told, and Stan, everybody who was in the room heard it, we were told, "Well, the university moves slow, so quote-unquote, 'get used to it.'" No, we don't have to get used to it. What we have to do is get answers. We need answers from the people in Lansing, who approved this $100 million gift to the University of Michigan, as to why they did not think it would not be wise to ensure that they're going to do that, which they shouldn't have, if they were going to do that, that they would at least tie bar it with the requirement that they have to locate on the ACM property, not on the pristine banks of the Huron River, right next to the township's nature preserve, South Hydro Park, where the only entrance into that park is separated by the properties that are being purchased by U of M. So at some point in time, you know, we've all been threatened, I've been threatened, supervisor's been threatened, "If you do this, you do that, you're never going to see blah blah blah." Okay, we get it. We get it right now, everybody's intimidated by you, we understand that. We understand that somehow we can't ever have a discussion, because it's U of M, they get what they want, we understand all that. But YMC Township, we've taken on a lot of causes over the years, and there's some that, you know, there's some things in this world that are just worth putting your marker down. It's just, it was true back when General Motors breached their commitment and abandoned this community back in the 1980s, after receiving billions of dollars in tax abatements. We were successful enough to at least get the law changed, so it would never happen again, without having a contract in place. We've taken on the toxic waste industries, even though they are located in Augusta Township. We made sure that the Seaver Farm property, which is now being developed by Culvers and Aldis and others to come, that the mobile home industry did not get their desire to rezon that property into a 1,200 mobile home community. Nothing against mobile homes, it's just that was not the right location. Just like this data center here, it's not the right location. You're going to have a negative impact. They have misled, misstated, misrepresented. Back a year ago, in their own application, they first said, "Well, all we want is 20 acres." And what really bothers probably me the most is on that application, they are required to say, "Well, what, do you have any support from the local unit of government or from an economic development organization?" And they said, "Well, we have support from Ann Arbor Spark." Ann Arbor Spark, as I said during that meeting, is not Ypsilanti Township. Nobody elected Ann Arbor Spark to represent the citizens of this township. These seven board members is who you should be talking to, not Ann Arbor Spark. And if Ann Arbor Spark thinks it's such a good idea, then they should have picked a location in Ann Arbor. And since you want to pick a location near a nature preserve, you could have picked the area out there by the Mathi Gardens. But you're not going to do that, because you know what would happen. So let's go to the township, which is also part of the Opportunity Index, which we have been identified as being basically have some of the highest rates of not having health insurance, some of the highest rates of not having life expectancy, especially amongst the black and brown population in our township, having not having as much educational opportunities. So let's pick an area where we can continue to inflict economic injustice, climate injustice upon the southeastern part of Michigan, right in the back of Ypsilanti Township. Don't worry about the fact that Los Alamos is a highly, you know, intelligent group of scientists that do a lot of national defense research. We get all that. But they also make them a high-value target. And so, against that backdrop, even back when we were first learning about this, we said, "Can you at least enter into a municipal services agreement to help pay for police and fire? Because if you're going to need police and fire, which they will, you're not going to, you're going to call YMC Township. No, we're not going to pay one dime. No, we're not going to do that. We've never done it. We're not going to do it now." So that's the arrogance. That's the arrogance of what you're dealing with. And again, at the same time, they're saying, "We're not going to give you a dime to respond to our 911 calls for police and fire, regardless of whether or not there's a hostage situation, there's an explosion, there's fire, employee rage, who knows what can happen. We're not going to give you one dime. By the way, we'll take the check from $100 million, made payable to the University of Michigan, and we'll put it into a separate trust account, so we can pay out for the construction of Los Alamos, located in New Mexico." So I'm always sure what it's going to take to create this fire of outrage, because I think one reason why I did lose my voice was probably screaming this week and then doing this resolution. Because each time I read a paragraph, and you know, I get more into it, and, well, you'll hear it yourself when they read it. But at some point in time, you know, enough is enough. It really is. And if you don't stand for something, that was saying, "So those song goes," you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And I think right now that the people that sit on this board today, the ones that sit on these boards, since I've been the attorney since 1984, have not been pushovers. They don't take, you know, they don't, they don't take an answer at face value. They're going to question that. They're going to fight for what is right. And I'm not really sure right now we have all the answers, and I'm not sure exactly what will be our next course of action. But I do believe right now that you're almost close to the one-year anniversary date of when they committed this atrocity of going to the MEDC, asking for $100 million, December 10th of last year, this is December 2nd. That at least you could take a moment tonight and possibly send a message back to the MEDC. They don't get $100 million, not when people are suffering in this state. They don't get $100 million when they don't let the supervisor, treasurer, and clerk, and our environmental attorney sit down at the table and have a discussion. You don't get $100 million to tell us, "Get used to it." No, we don't have to. We don't work for the University of Michigan. And people at Lansing should be, should be very proud of this township board for doing what they should be doing. This is not, why should it be on the township board? To say, "Hundred million dollars, where you going to go? Did you get authorization from the township? Do you have any kind of letters of support from the township? No, we have them from Ann Arbor Spark." Well, they don't speak for YMC Township. What's wrong with you people? Well, I won't lose my voice again probably, but I think I'll stop right now. But beyond that, I would just let the board know that I think I did to the best of my ability, prepare a resolution that reflects the conversations we've had collectively as a board, as part of our internal group of meetings with MEDC, our aborted efforts to have a meaningful conversation with U of M. At this point in time, this is the next step, in my opinion, that the board should consider. And I'll leave it to you to decide whether or not you think this is a resolution that you should, that you should approve.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Clerk Swanson.
Charter Township of Ypsilanti, Resolution 2025-42. A resolution requesting the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the Michigan Strategic Fund, and the Strategic Site Readiness Program to cancel, revoke, and/or clawback immediately the $100 million grant that was previously awarded to the University of Michigan at a regular meeting of the MEDC held on December 10th, 2024. Whereas on November 5th, 2024, the University of Michigan Board of Regents, here and after referred to as U of M, purchased 19.82 acres of vacant property located at the corner of Bridge and Textile Roads, specifically 10221 Textile Road, for the sale price of $1,500,000. And whereas, subsequent to the November 5th, 2024 purchase of 10221 Textile Road, U of M filed with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, here and after referred to as the MEDC, a memorandum dated December 10th, 2024, addressed to the Michigan Strategic Fund Board, requesting $100 million from the Strategic Site Readiness Program, SSRP, related to the site development, construction, and other related eligible activities under the SSRP, necessary to construct a new advanced computing facility in Ypsilanti Township, Michigan, the project. And whereas, the project consists of at least two state-of-the-art, advanced computing facilities, one of which will be utilized primarily by the university, and the other is intended to be used by Los Alamos National Laboratory, LANL, for advanced research, here and after referred to as data centers. And whereas, according to the memorandum submitted by U of M, the total cost of the project is expected to exceed $1.2 billion, and the project is expected to become fully operational by 2030. And whereas, the memorandum prepared and submitted solely by U of M, without any knowledge and/or input from the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees, here and after referred to as a Township Board, emphatically stated that the two data centers will be located on a 20-acre property in Ypsilanti Township, to wit, the property that is located at 10221 Textile Road, that was acquired on November 5th, 2024. And whereas, the memorandum prepared and submitted by U of M, represented to the MEDC and MSF, specifically stated that DTE anticipates constructing a new electrical substation near the site, also in Ypsilanti Township, with two-thirds of the substation's capacity supporting the project and the remaining one-third capacity for community benefit. The cost for constructing this electrical infrastructure is included in the total cost for the project. And whereas, the memorandum prepared and submitted by U of M stated that the project is expected to create highly skilled federal research lab positions and provide a significant attraction opportunity for out-of-state companies that are interested in partnering with LANL or the university. And furthermore stated that LANL was partnering with U of M as a result of the state of Michigan's $100 million in support of construction of LANL's national lab buildings. And whereas, the memorandum prepared and submitted by U of M required U of M to meet a number of key statutory criteria pursuant to Section 88T of the MSF Act, and when asked to explain the degree to which the project is a priority for local government or economic development corporation, simply stated, Ann Arbor Spark has expressed their support for this project. And whereas, U of M deliberately and blatantly failed to acknowledge to the MEDC Board and the MSF Board that U of M had never discussed seeking a $100 million grant with the township's board, elected officials, much less had received any support from the township board in regards to this $100 million grant to build these two data centers on the 20-acre parcel located at Bridge and Textile Roads. And whereas, subsequent to the approval of the MEDC and the MSF Boards to award the $100 million grant in accordance with the requirements of the SSRP back on December 10th, 2024, U of M was then authorized by the Board of Regents to acquire an additional 124.68 acres of vacant land located at 10455 and 10635 Textile Road, which is separated only by the 20-acre parcel acquired on November 5th, 2024, by the township's access road, which is the only entrance into Ypsilanti Township's South Hydro Park, a nature preserve apprising approximately 17 acres. And whereas, this planned acquisition of the additional 124.68 acres by U of M was never disclosed to the MEDC and MSF Boards during the December 10th, 2024 meeting, and in and of itself constitutes a material misrepresentation, as defined in the SSRP grant summary of terms, which should result in the immediate cancellation of the $100 million grant previously awarded to U of M. And whereas, U of M continues to be recognized as being one of the wealthiest universities in the United States, with the endowment fund that is close to $20 billion, which makes U of M the largest, or the third-largest, endowment fund in the United States among public universities. And whereas, it is unconscionable for the MEDC and MSF Boards to award $100 million to one of the wealthiest universities in the United States, which is yet another example of corporate welfare, of a corporate welfare subsidy to a tax-exempt body, which comes at the expense of the taxpayers of this state, and especially Ypsilanti Township, as exemplified by U of M's refusal to pay one dime towards police and fire services for these two data centers. And whereas, the award of $100 million to U of M comes at a time when hundreds of thousands of Michigan residents are losing their Medicaid benefits and other nutritional benefits as a result of a number of federal budgetary cuts that are having a negative and profound impact upon the daily lives of Michigan residents. And whereas, it is shameful that one of the wealthiest universities in the United States would even have the audacity to seek a $100 million grant from MEDC and MSF Boards, especially given their material misrepresentations, as set forth in their own memorandum dated December 10th, 2024, resulting in a classic textbook example of what constitutes a bait and switch. And whereas, subsequent to receiving the $100 million award from MEDC and MSF Boards, U of M has continued to operate in a shroud of secrecy, and has steadfastly refused to allow the township's duly-elected officials and their retained professional consultants to participate in any meetings as it pertains to the two data centers, in spite of the fact that the township has requested U of M, as well as the state of Michigan, to locate these data centers on the former General Motors' hydro-matic property, in which the state of Michigan has already invested over $100 million as part of the state's redevelopment of this former General Motors' property. And whereas, U of M has carefully orchestrated and prevented, to the fullest extent possible, any efforts of the township officials to participate in any meaningful discussions and/or dialogue as it pertains to these proposed data centers. and/or dialogue as it pertains to these proposed data centers by purportedly entering into non-disclosure agreements, which serves only the interest of U of M and LANL at the expense of the public. And whereas U of M continues to refuse the township board's legitimate request for a seat at the table, given that the township is the host community, and furthermore continues to refuse to hold a public hearing in Ypsilanti Township so as to allow the public an opportunity to ask meaningful questions regarding these proposed data centers and the impact it will have upon the environment, the electrical grid and many other salient issues. And whereas U of M's refusal to hold a public hearing in Ypsilanti Township elevates the phrase "lack of transparency" to a whole different level. And as the township board has no choice but to request of the MEDC and MSF Boards to cancel the $100 million grant that was previously awarded to U of M as a result of a number of material misrepresentations that were made by U of M as set forth in this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees hereby unanimously request that $100 million grant that was previously awarded by the MEDC and the MSF Boards pursuant to the Strategic Site Readiness Program grant be canceled, revoked and other or and/or clawed back immediately as a result of numerous material misrepresentations made by U of M to the MEDC, MSF and SSRP during the December 10th, 2024 meeting. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded by the Township Clerk's Office to the members of the MEDC Board, the MSF Board and the SSRP. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution also be forwarded by the Township Clerk's Office to Governor Gretchen Whitmer, U.S. Senators Gary Peters and Alyssa Slotkin, Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, Senator Jeff Erwin, State Representative Jimmy Wilson Jr. and the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. Be it further resolved that Resolution 2025-42 is hereby adopted. So moved.
Motion Swanson, support Aldridge. I do know there was some people that wanted to comment on this before the board comments, if you'd like to. Yes. Just state your name, if you would, for the record, and if you're a township resident.
Good to go.
Good evening. My name is Rita Turner Sheeran. I am a resident of Washtenaw County, city of Ann Arbor, and I am a volunteer with campaign Michiganders for Money Out of Politics. I come here tonight because I would like to point out that Washtenaw County, specifically the communities of Ypsilanti and Celine Townships, have been pushed to build data centers in communities with little community input, especially, as we hear tonight, local government. Currently, a major voice in the push for these data centers are the power companies and the corporations that support them, in our case, DTE. The Money Out of Politics campaign attributes the outsized voice which the utilities and other corporations have had in these data centers and the push and that amount of money that the utilities are allowed to funnel into the campaigns of the people who are supposed to regulate them. And this needs to stop. Should our elected officials be accountable to his or her constituents or to the utilities and the corporations? The purpose of our petition to stop utilities and other major contractors in our state from funding campaigns of those very representatives that are elected who are in charge of regulating them and not listening to us, especially on this very hot topic of data centers. You've spoken, your eloquence on this proposal is, is very heartening to me. But I would invite everybody to go to the mopupmichigan.org to find a location to sign our petitions. Help us, the state of Michigan, pass a law to, to make sure that the elected officials serve us, we the people, and not the power companies and other the corporate interests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Jeremy Haley, Ipsy Township, just like to say thank you for all of you and especially Attorney Winters for putting the resolution together. And at the most recent U of M meeting, there was a woman from Augusta Township who was able to speak on the Ipsy Township data center. And they actually, the person who spoke about it did say it was a 100-megawatt facility and described a little more of, actually more of anything that I heard of any one of you say what it would be. So if you want to go back to wherever they had it and watch right after comments, you can hear what the man said, what is exactly what they plan on doing with it. But thanks again for putting resolution together.
Regina Kudla, I'm a resident of Ipsy Township since 1990, and I want to heartfully thank all of you for all the hard work that you've done to represent us in pursuing this over the last few months. It's just been incredible. I'm really impressed and I really appreciate how much you've done for us working on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none?
Jessica Krueger, I'm also a Ypsilanti Township resident. Kind of tying into what other people have said, DTE is also in their Celine Data Center trying to push through without public comment. And there is a meeting about that tomorrow night on Zoom if you would like to hear sort of what they have to say. But I'd like to point out that DTE in particular has some of the highest rates, worst outage percentage and length and duration. And Michigan itself also is one of the highest power costing and least efficient grids out there. We are not the place to be building data centers. So I would, I appreciate that you're taking this step tonight. I appreciate the other data center-related item that you have on the agenda. And I, uh, look forward to seeing more of that kind of action because I think the thing that we all value about our home here is not its electrical systems, it is its clean water and its beautiful location and many other things. Like, we're, we're not the place for this and I'm glad that you guys are seeing that and standing up for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board member comment? Yes, yes. Clerk Swanson?
So I'd like to read a email that I sent trustees, just so that the public can hear it. First, I want to say thank you, Doug, for drafting the resolution. You've done a great job laying out the problems with U of M submission of the application to receive the $100 million. It was a brazen action on behalf of the University of Michigan to request and receive $100 million without connecting in any way with the host community prior to submission. It speaks volumes about what U of M believes that it can do and what they believe the state of Michigan will accept from them. It's even more concerning that there are no checks and balances at the state level when verifying applications for massive sums of money. There are no boundaries or guardrails when it comes to the University of Michigan because they have concentrated power with little to no oversight. It's very hard to believe that this is what legislators intended when they carved out a tax-exempt status for the university and created pretty much an anything-goes atmosphere around university actions impacting local communities. It's even more concerning to think that our limited communication has been with individuals who have extremely well-paid jobs that are specifically for governmental relations and community relations. From our experience at this point, the University of Michigan by design is organized to limit the knowledge of the host community, tell the host community, it'll be good for you. And if the community has questions or a different perspective, they are treated with disdain and additional layers of secrecy are added to an already opaque, high-impact action void of a balance of power and trust. What's happening in this situation is just plain wrong. The university has failed our community and the state has failed our community in this case. The power relationship dynamic here is destructive and unhealthy. It is well documented in University of Michigan research through Poverty Solutions that our community needs very specific conditions and support to thrive. Nothing in the U of M LANL project is aligned with this very important research. The state of Michigan, specifically MEDC, has worked collaboratively with our community leaders to clean up and prepare the ACM site for economic development. MEDC is well aware that when Ypsilanti Township is an active engaged partner, great things can, can and will happen. There is a history and a track record of what is possible when we have a seat at the table. The idea that the MEDC did not see our lack of involvement in the application submission is, as a glaring red flag, is deeply troubling.
Thank you. Clerk Swanson, are there any other comments from board member?
I'll be short, I won't be near as elegant as Attorney Winters or Clerk Swanson, but I thought after many years in police work, I had seen a lot of things. The amount of arrogance that I've seen in these meetings and heard from these representatives from U of M is just astounding. Their lack of willingness to work in a collegial atmosphere, the lack of sharing information. And for a university that prides itself with one of the mottos of leaders and best, to go to a state agency and misrepresent their true intent and not include a host community is just astounding. And I know the four of us sitting here were taken aback by the attitude at last Tuesday's meeting, especially when we began to question the lack of their desire to have us involved. The more they can keep us in the dark, keep the community in the dark, the worse it gets. And the one young lady who mentioned DTE, we are certainly feeling the pressure from them as well. And I certainly don't want to speak for six other board members and an attorney, but this is not a board that will be pushed and cajoled into doing something we know is not appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Aldridge, other comment?
Yes, I have a comment. I do support what Attorney Winters and you all have been doing. As far as, to me, we've known what U of M wants to do, but to have it written out in a resolution is just, and as I echo my other constituents, it is disgusting and it is a slap in the face and it, it's very disrespectful because, you know, Ann Arbor Spark does not speak for us. It's, it's like we're treated as a third-class citizen, you know, not even a second-class citizen, given no respect and not even listened to. So whatever it takes, I'm in full support and, you know, to just keep fighting and, and not give up, just keep fighting because at some point, something will give. But it won't give if we stop fighting. And it's just to keep fighting because, you know, you, you never know what can happen if we keep fighting. But to just stop and, and let them do whatever they want, it's just, like I said, it's disgusting and disrespectful. And I'm in support of anything we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Newman. Any other comment?
I'll try to be brief with this. The one thing that I get concerned about is that people say, well, you know, you can't put them on brownfields because that just puts it in different, in different neighborhoods that have already been harmed. I don't think forcing data centers on areas where there's farmland or there's vacant land is necessarily the right thing to have happen. It's true, we're an industrial state and there are a lot of places where industry has left a mark and it has not been positive. So if this, and the state has already decided for us that data centers are something they want to attract and they want here. But they did that without really planning out what that was going to look like. So what they did is they created greedy situations where people can get those tax incentives so people want to be here. But they're trying to do it in the cheapest way possible for them, going on vacant land with no creativity or inventiveness in how we can do this. So we can't tell people no, nothing. So we're trying to make something good come out of this by saying they can go to ACM, a place where the state's already invested a ton of money to clean something up and get it ready for this purpose. So we aren't the only community where these types of properties exist. So if the state felt so strongly about them going there, then they should be making sure that they go places where they continue to do cleanup, they continue to do things, they continue to help with the environment. Otherwise, the impact is just level, like going to vacant land and then when the next, this industry decides it's done its usefulness with our community, then they're just going to leave another space that needs to be taken care of. So there are issues looking back and forth, but if the state has said they're going to do that, the state should have said, you're going to go places when you're going to use your billions to help make something better that's already there. So I just want to say that part because it's concerning that right now these data centers are just taking a look at all these incentives and what they want to do is they want to go to farmland, they wanted to go be to big open tracts of land. That's not a good, they're acting as if we're not going to need farmland in the future, that we're not going to need these things. So I think it's very concerning that the state didn't step up and try to put some guardrails and boundaries on this. They left local communities to have to deal with something that, that has intense pressure because of all the money and the power, and then they didn't give us a whole lot of tools to fight back.
Thank you. My colleagues have said it all and there's not, and I'm grateful for it. I do want to say that my experience with Chris Kolbe, who is a vice president of governmental relations, has been the first time in my career as a public servant, being treated as a township was dismissive, condescending, unprofessional, rude. I've never experienced that and we have dealt with developers, that we have fought in court, and they still remain professional. What we are experiencing with, and Chris Kolbe is a vice president of governmental relations. When I wanted to go above his head to his supervisor's superior, the vice, the president of the University of Michigan is the only place to go. So it's hard for us to deal with people like this who treat us this way. And it is going to require us to match their energy that they have given to us. They have totally disrespected their own employees that have been to our board meetings and said, don't trust U of M. They've totally dismissed our residents who don't work for U of M but have come here, the environmentalists, the local, the board, our professional. They do not care at all about who they just run over in order to meet their objective of more money. It's, the state of Michigan needs to be held accountable too, from the governor all the way down to the state representatives. DTE does not get a pass at the Public Service Commission. They are a public utility. And for them to do a runaround the Public Service Commission process, in the words of John Newman, Trustee Newman, is disgusting. process, in the words of John Newman, Trustee Newman, is disgusting. That they would even ask for that. The University of Michigan does not have to go through any of the planning processes in our community. They are exempt from our ordinances, from planning, from zoning, and they know they have the power in this area, and that is why they do not have to share anything with us and will not share anything with us. They also are exempt from taxes. So, they pay zero taxes, create 30 jobs, get $100 million from the taxpayers of this state, and treat us this way. There's no room in government, there's no room in elected officials, and this is Republicans and Democrats. I'm not singling out anyone. I cannot believe what they're doing to the state of Michigan right now. I went to Saline. I was invited to speak there regarding the process for DTE not having to go through the Public Service Commission. And for those of you who don't know, you cannot have exclusionary zoning. You can't exclude any use in a community. If you do, you will be sued and you will lose. We learned this early on in my career when we didn't want adult bookstores in the township, and you have to have a place for them. But putting it on farmland, putting it on the banks of the Huron River is disgusting. And why they're doing that is beyond, I just, I don't understand it. They say that, you know, economic development, economic development. They said it created 200 jobs in Ipsy Township. That is a lie. It's 30 jobs. 30 jobs for all the destruction they want to do on the banks of the Huron River. Across from an apartment complex, across from a convenience store that has just upgraded, invested over $1 million there. They want a 20-acre substation, which is 100 megawatts, which makes it a super-duper computer, in the words of Chris Kolbe. It is just, I just can't understand, and I, Trustee Rose, not here, she would be speaking as well on this, and she said, "Brenda, you need to reach out to the governor's office. You need to reach out to the border regions. Just call them." So, I did. The governor's office did have someone respond and said that they would look into it, and actually said they appreciated just hearing the facts. You know, we're not making up white noise. These are the facts of the case. It's very simple. And if you could just go and visit the two sites. The one site, heavily wooded, 125 acres, which we had no idea they were buying, and neither did Ann Arbor Spark. They told me that yesterday. They had no idea that they were doing it. It was presented on 20 acres of flat land, two office buildings, 200 employees, $200,000 jobs. It was a lie from the very beginning, and they think it's funny to treat us this way because they can. Like I said, we're united as a board. Our community is united. Our county is united. They are not going to accept what is going on in this county anywhere with data centers. It should be planned out, it should be in appropriate places that have former auto manufacturing. I mean, I know some people philosophically doesn't, they don't want data centers. They don't want AI taken over. I respect that, and I understand that. But the reality is, you cannot deny them as a local government. You'll get sued, you will lose. So, the smaller townships or townships that don't have them, they really need to get the zoning updated. We will be coming back with another ordinance. This is just, the ordinance on this agenda is removing it. We had data centers in several areas in Ipsy Township, but it wasn't these, this type of data center. It was like phone data centers, you know. There's also like St. Joe Hospital used to have data centers where they'd call and do billing, and I had no idea that a data center is what it is today until I went with Trustee Thornton and our planning director to see it in Ohio. You have to see it. Anyone who voted for it at the state of Michigan, they have to go see what they look like because you have no idea until you do. It is a heavy industrial use. There is no if, ands, and if you're going to put us anywhere in your community, it needs to be in heavy industrial use. No other area could handle it. They just can't in the small, and the townships that are all farmland, that are agriculture, they, you know, the county, our county needs to help them with it because we have to protect each other. What happens in Saline affects us. What happens here affects everybody as well. We want to, we tried to be professional, we really did, but with their power, they can reach very far. I was surprised at how far they could reach, but we are not intimidated at all because we represent the people. Our people do not want it. It's that simple. So, I hope and appreciate all the support that we've been getting. I appreciate U of M providing jobs for our people, the hospital, U of, you know, first I was saying I hate University of Michigan, and I don't. That's not the right thing to say. There's some people I dislike greatly for the way they treated our community. But we want to do the right thing. We tried to do the right thing, and they don't care. They don't care what we think, they don't care what anyone thinks. So, hopefully, between the governor's office, other people that we are reading, reaching out to, border regions, and I encourage residents to reach out. Send an email, do a phone call, because it's the governor's office, the state legislators, and the University of Michigan that has all the power. But we will fight till the end. We might not win the war, but there will be a battle. Thank you. We have a motion of support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under old business, we have the approval of the purchase of a new audiovisual system for the senior program in rooms 202 and 204 in the amount of $36,080.09. This was budgeted in line item 230754974050. I'm sorry. That was getting, that was the last sentence. This was, that's okay. This was tabled at the November 18, 2025 meeting and needs to be removed from the table.
Motion to remove.
Motion Eldridge?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is properly before the board. Clerk Swanson, there was a memo in the packet that it was tabled so that our attorney and our IT director can look at these, this purchase, and our IT director has recommended that we rebid it. So, the motion before us is to deny the present approval and to rebid it. A motion is in order?
Still moved.
Support Thornton.
All right. We have a motion of support to deny the approval of the purchase and rebid it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the agenda is a Resolution 202529, which is for the fiscal year budget. The total amount for the expenditures is $46,200,462,2415. And the total revenue is $46,522,102,522,102. This budget had a public hearing. It's a line item budget. If anyone's ever interested in transparency, it's a very good book to look at to see where the taxpayers' monies are going to. And based on that, we need a motion to approve the 2026 fiscal year budget. Motion Eldridge? Support Peterson. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a few questions. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
In looking over the budget, let's see, I have a question about regarding the property taxes, revenue. Do you know if any scheduled projects are on the table, such as subdivisions or new businesses?
Yeah, a subdivision was approved on Tuttle Hill at the Planning Commission, and it will be coming to the Township Board. And as you know, we've added Aldi's and Culver's will be coming on Huron Street.
Okay.
We also have a hotel, two hotels that have been proposed but have not been through the planning process so far.
So, that wasn't included, but it's just kind of on the back burner as knowing that we'll have these coming in?
Yeah, you can only include which is, what is already built, but...
Right. Okay.
Expanding the tax base is critical.
Yes, okay. The pilot payment in lieu of taxes, can they be increased? Is there any room for increase? Because the businesses are getting tax breaks anyway. So, if, I was wondering if it could be increased, the amount could be increased as a revenue stream?
So, if you're asking, do you have a specific number? I think I know which one you're talking about.
Oh, gee.
But I believe that is under contract, and that's all that we can get from them.
Well, we have the American Center for Mobility.
Yeah.
And when they add any new development, that increases the amount of revenue that comes to Ipsilene Township.
Okay.
That was negotiated in the very beginning of the American Center for Mobility, and currently it pays over $200,000 in taxes.
Right, that's what I was...
And that is reviewed annually.
And annually, yeah.
Okay. The next one is the, and I just wrote questions, I forgot to figure out where the, they are specifically located. But there was BSNA software, and I think this was an IT department. So, if I understand that, that's for an, for a cloud storage in Arizona, is it? Or...
I believe there's two sites.
Okay.
I don't have the information right in front...
It's a data center that stores it.
There's two, there's two offsites that will store that information.
Okay. All right.
Did you have any, did you want any more information?
No, I was just trying to understand because it was being stored in a data center, you know.
Yeah.
Found it kind of ironic. But, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's what that was. I also looked at the, understanding that, that for the 14B court, that because the projects are completed, it reduced the revenue being budgeted for the, because the project had been completed, there was no revenue budgeted for the next year for the 14B court, district court. And that was in the 901, the 901 capital outlay had been completed?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, we do not have, the grant is finished, so in '26, that's not budgeted either place.
Okay. Now, I saw where interest, there was interest earned, and I think this was the Law Enforcement Fund 266, there was interest earned of $531,234. And in looking at the previous years, acti, actuals, it was around the same amount, and I was wondering what that interest is from, and could it be budgeted a little bit more, not necessarily to the $500,000? Because I know the budget is $250,000, but...
Right. Those are all on our bank. Right now, we have what's called a sweep-through for the Treasury bills.
Okay.
And we earn interest on that. If you'll, if you notice, it's based on the Treasurer's report that you get, and you'll see for each fund how much are in there. And we have quite a bit of funds that they have sitting there, and that's what's earning the interest.
Okay.
The interest was higher, it's starting to go down. I'm seeing it go down each month now.
Oh, really?
Yes. So, I was very hesitant to, you know, take it up there. I mean, if we get more on it, that's fine. We are looking into maybe doing something different with the banks with FDIC insured funding, so we can get a little bit more interest. But I was just hesitant to increase it when I can see it starting to go down. I mean, if you look before '22, we barely earned $20,000.
Right.
So, you know, I'm a little hesitant.
Yeah, yeah, it's conservative.
To commit it, but if we do make it, that always makes your bottom line better, so...
It, right, exactly.
Trustee Newman, we also decreased the millage by seven tenths of a mil because we have not had all of the positions filled in the Sheriff's Department. So, that will reduce the amount of revenue coming in because, and that's quite a, it's...
And also, to that point, I know the sheriff has, I know we signed, what, a four-year contract where the amounts, what, of service units were going to go up, and I saw where the amount for this next year is $192,680, which kind of offset that millage reduction. Is that projected to continually go up? And were we going to do something about that as far as research alternatives, or have we spoken to the sheriff for any other options regarding the service unit cost?
I believe you're on that committee, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, but I don't think we've...
Talked about the cost.
Yeah.
In the law enforcement, it also includes sheriff services, which is what you're speaking to.
Okay.
And community engagement and ordinance. So, it's not just the Sheriff's Department in there, but we have talked. The actual contract is up, and the county has approved a public, a police services committee, which is what we had in the past, to review all of the cost of a sheriff deputy and to make sure that, an intense forensic review, if you will, of the actual cost to make sure that it's unfair in what they're charging. And also, the county, they say it's a grant, but it's our taxpayers' money. They give grants for sheriff's positions too.
Okay.
And is that $30,000? It's been that way, it's been flat.
Okay. Because I know we budgeted for 35, and we, it's never been 35.
No, well, yeah.
And, you know, at some point, and probably because they're short-staffed, but as our township is expanding and with more businesses and more town subdivisions, are there other options in addition? options in addition to the police officers, I guess, is what I'm saying? Because if the 35 are never available, we're gonna need more officers. Is there, so I guess I was just thinking out loud.
We used to, but in the past, we actually allocated for 38 officers.
Okay.
And we used to pay for 38 officers, and we never received 38 officers. So they reduced it to 35. Former Sheriff Clinton reduced it to 35, and we still don't have 35.
Okay.
So we do have monthly meetings with them, and Matt Harshberger, who is the undersheriff, feels pretty confident that by August, we should be at our 35 number.
Okay. And I understand the 14B Circuit Court is complete. How many officers will be assigned to that court? And do they, will they come from the law enforcement?
Um, no. Trustee Aldridge helped negotiate that with the 14B Court, and they're bailiffs, which is what they've always had was bailiffs, but.
Okay. John, in that area, most courts around the county do utilize the sheriff's office and use their court security team. When we looked at the cost of that, because with the new additions, there was a need to raise the number of bailiffs. Currently, or previous to this reconstruction, there was one bailiff on duty per day. When we added the security equipment, we knew we were gonna have to increase that. The number that will actually be on each day will exceed one. I don't want to say the certain number, but when we looked at the cost of what it would be to contract those from Washtenaw County, it was in the neighborhood of $300,000. However, we felt if we continued using the bailiff system as we did, albeit increasing the numbers, we could keep that cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $180,000 and get the same coverage. So we went that route, and we were able to save the township somewhere in the neighborhood of $110,000 to $120,000 and get the same amount of coverage in the same way, just using a different method.
So using bailiffs instead of officers?
Yeah, the bailiffs we use are retired police officers, as are the ones for the county. They're generally retired police.
Okay.
We just eliminated a lot of the overhead costs and the profit margins that the county had built into their system. We just took those out of play.
Yeah.
The bailiff system has worked in this court for the entirety of its existence, forty-some years. We just increased the number of bailiffs that were working at any given time.
Okay. Thank you. That was all I had. Overall, I thought it was a thorough budget, and I was glad to be able to see the detail for the lines that I've wanted information on. So I'm good.
Thank you. We have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is first reading of Resolution 2025-30, which is proposed ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance to amend Appendix A zoning township, zoning ordinance of Ypsilanti Charter Township and modify the district that lists data centers as a permitted or special land use in the township. Clerk Swenson?
Charter Township of Ypsilanti, Resolution 2025-30, in reference to ordinance 2025-513. Zoning ordinance tax amendment regarding data center definitions and locations. The following resolution was offered by the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Department and supported by the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission. Whereas data centers are relatively new land use that house computer servers and other technology in large buildings, served by electrical support facilities such as substations, generators, and batteries, and that can consume large amounts of electricity and water. And whereas in studying data centers as a potential land use in Ypsilanti Township, it has become evident that data centers are similar to an industrial use in relation to their size and potential external effects, such as noise, electrical power consumption, water consumption, and, whereas the township is committed to locating data centers in areas with appropriate infrastructure and minimal impact on surrounding properties and minimizing adverse effects on residents and adjacent communities, including managing noise from mechanical equipment and generators. And whereas the ordinance amendment is consistent with the intent of the ICR Industrial and Commercial Revitalization District, the NB Neighborhood Corridors Form-Based Code Zoning District, the RC Regional Corridors Form-Based Code Zoning District, and the TC Town Center Form-Based Code Zoning District, as well as the township's current master plan. And whereas it is regularly scheduled, whereas at its regularly scheduled meeting held November 10th, 2025, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission held a public hearing, discussed the proposed tax amendments, and recommended that the Township Board approve the ordinance amendment as presented. Now therefore be it resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board hereby adopts and incorporates by reference ordinance number 2025-513 attached here, too, by reference in its entirety. So moved?
Motion Swenson. Motion Swenson. Support Thornton. Support Thornton. Mark is here, Mark is our Planning Director, Mark Yandrick. It's the first time you've been to our board meeting to present.
Good evening, everybody. Can you get onto the PowerPoint presentation? It's a few slides down. All right, thank you. So tonight is the zoning ordinance tax amendment on data centers. These are the five different sections that are being proposed to be amended for this. You can go next. So, and I just wanted to highlight for the trustees and also for the public as to what process this is. So in August, the Township Board passed a motion directing Planning Commission to review zoning changes to data centers. There was a notice in the Ann Arbor News M Live for a public hearing of Planning Commission. So the notice was on October 26th, the Planning Commission public hearing was held on November 10th. Tonight is the first reading, and under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, there's a minimum of two readings that must be heard by this Township Board before you can take action on the ordinance. Next one. So, under the current ordinance, data centers for storage and warehousing of computer servers are permitted in the Logistics and Manufacturing, which is LM, and the ICR zoning districts, which is, I forgot that, but I have ICR. Industrial and commercial revitalization area, forgive me. Data processing and computer centers, including service and maintenance electronic data processing equipment, is permitted in all three districts, so the previous two, as well as innovation and technology. And then furthermore, in the form-based codes, data centers are permitted in these land use types, allowing use Group 5 with technology centers and office research centers. And this ordinance also really lacks clear definitions for what data centers are. And as we've talked about this evening, originally, they were 20, 30,000 square feet, and they are much, much larger these days, both in Michigan and across the country. So if you can go to the next slide, I have maps on the next four images. If you hit the down arrow on the bottom right, that might help go from one slide to the next. Do you see that arrow? So this is the township zoning map, and go down to the next, and just basically highlighting the entire township. I did want to highlight where they're currently allowed. So these red stars are located where our industrial zones are located throughout the township, and that's where these data centers could potentially go today. If you go to the next slide. And I have these red lines just identifying where the form-based code districts are within the township. And again, that's along East Michigan, West Michigan, Packard, Washtenaw, E-course, and in South Huron Street. Next slide. So the purpose of tonight's ordinance is that it would only be permitted in that area that's with, where the ACM property, which is the Industrial and Commercial Revitalization District. It would only be allowed, right now, it is a permitted use. This ordinance proposes that it would be only permitted with a special land use, which is a process that an applicant would have to go to Planning Commission, have a public hearing, get a recommendation, and it would be approved by this board. You guys could review this on a case-by-case basis with the special land use standards. Now, if a data center comes in at 20,000 square feet, maybe the size of the Civic Center here, it's not that large. It may not require as much utilities. It may be worth consideration whether this is an appropriate use for this site, or is there additional land use design standards that might need to meet the standards of a special land use in the township. But if something comes in at 200,000 square feet, you know, depending on where it's located, you may feel that it may not be appropriate, that area. And that really gives the township, and specifically the Township Board, the choice that if it's in that area, it is permitted, but only with that special land use approval by the Township Board. Next slide.
May I have a question?
Yeah, with the Planning Commission recommendation. So just to highlight, this ordinance removes the permission for data centers in the two industrial districts, which are more on the lighter side of industrial districts. They're not, if you look at the intent, you look at the other land use permissions, Logistics and Manufacturing, and Industrial and Technology are not intended for heavy, heavy manufacturing, heavy industrial, which is different than those two. It does remove the allowance for data centers within the three form-based codes. Those form-based codes look at design, they look at use and activation. And while data centers do serve a purpose, they don't really activate the surrounding area in the way that really is desirable from these form-based codes that we're looking to redevelop. And as I mentioned, it changes the data center allowance in the ICR, which is in the ACM property area, Industrial and Commercial Revitalization, from permitted to special land use. Now additionally, it does clean up some headings in Article 4, but do not modify the applications or regulations. This is really just, there are some headings that are mislabeled, and it just kind of corrects that. Doesn't change any regulations of our zoning ordinance. And then we add definitions for both data centers and technology centers and office research. And I think that helps to give some clarity for when a proposal comes in, whether it's a data center or a computing center, that really we're looking at it with the same type of glasses on, the same type of view. Next, next slide. Data centers and computers, computing centers are much larger in size, scale, and utility consumption than they were 10-plus years ago, under when the previous ordinance was drafted. And the ICR zoning district is a brownfield district of the former GM plant and the surrounding areas. There is existing utility capacity in proximity to Yucca, which may allow for some water. This proposal attempts to minimize the impact to the township, as this zoning district is more isolated than other zoning districts in the township. What I mean by that is there are main roads of Wired and 94 and 12 that this is more isolated, that it lessens that impact to the surrounding area, unlike other areas with, such as on textile, you know, textile road is just a two-lane road. And so the impact of having something across the street is gonna be much, felt much more than Wired, which is, the right-of-way width is much wider. And also, going back to the ICR zoning district, it's next to Willow Run, next to an airport, and can handle much more of an industrial use here. So, and I mentioned that this proposal really would allow data centers, but it's not guaranteed by Wright, and that really is the key thing to consider. Next slide. I do want to note, this ordinance tonight does not impact any proposals from the University of Michigan and Los Alamos Computing Center due to that state regulation that we've been mentioning, that they are exempt. Unfortunately, as a charter township, we'd like to have home rule, but that does not apply to this. So this ordinance would apply to all other proposals that are not exempt under this law or any other state or federal exemptions. Next slide. This is just highlighting those two definitions that we're adding. I'll just go through the data center or computing center. It's a facility primarily used to house computer systems and associated components, including servers, telecommunications, storage systems, backup power supplies, and redundant data communication connections and environmental controls. And really establishing these definitions help staff, it helps Planning Commission, it helps the board really, and applicants to know where this can go in the township as it more clearly defines it. So finally, Planning Commission's recommended approval, six to zero, at the zoning ordinance tax amendment to the Township Board. One person did speak at the public hearing, that is reflected in the approvals that are in your packet. So that is my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Very good, thank you, Ford. And I know you're, we've been also working on a actual data ordinance. So to me, a data and a computation, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know the difference. It computes, the difference, it computes 24 hours and the other stores.
The important thing to keep in mind is, you know, we're looking at how the use is, you know, utilized, but also the utilities, the aesthetics. They're gonna look, as far as we know, they're gonna look very similar to each other. Now, in five, 10 years, as technology changes, hopefully the planning department will, you know, if we need to further revisit this, we can do that at that time. But as Supervisor Stumbo mentioned, we are looking at further regulations specific to site design that may be important if someone is looking to site a data center here to really help us with aesthetics, with environmental, with other things. So we're exploring that and hope to bring that forward to Planning Commission in 2026.
Thank you, Mark, for your presentation.
Uh, may I say?
Yes, Trustee Newman?
I think what differentiates other places that have data centers that they want to build is that they're private, they're private companies, private corporations versus U of M, they can do whatever they want. And I think people get confused in thinking that, you know, that this could be fought like it's being fought with those situations. That's all I wanted to say.
And other communities, we had them in our zoning ordinance. They are allowed. They changed a lot since we put them in 10 years ago, but they are currently allowed in our zoning ordinance, and it was in many districts, and now it's very concentrated in one area.
So this will be for every, you know, other places?
If they come to Ypsilanti Township?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to have two readings on this, yeah.
Okay.
Give a, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you.
We have a motion and support, all in. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to cut you all off. So Erica Tebbins, Ypsilanti Township. I suppose I could have also put this in the part with the resolution, but I feel like it also fits in here. Thank you for the earlier resolution and the transparency about the whole U of M data center process and honesty with your experience dealing with them. For the last three months, I have been talking to community members at the farmer's market about the data center. On Halloween, we have a very busy neighborhood, we were giving out information to the grownups coming through, and I've attended every data center meeting since August. And I will say that of everything I've ever been involved with in the last 30 years, like this is one of the things that, across socioeconomic status, age, political background, like everyone that we tell about it, they are all unified in that they don't want it here. And to, to your point, Trustee Newman, one of the things that has been challenging, it was something I had to learn about it at the beginning, and then I keep passing on to other people, is that it is a very different fight, and it is very frustrating. As I'm sure everyone is aware, like it's not just... As I'm sure everyone is aware, like, it's not just, you know, right here in Washtenaw County, but across the state and our region, people, again, from very diverse backgrounds, are pushing back against data centers as well. But I do think what is interesting here, and in this proposal, as was pointed out, it still wouldn't apply to U of M. And so, you know, I just want to say, like, yes, there are some people who don't want any types of data centers, but I think that what is also unique about this is the fact that 90%, being with Lanal, being that that will be classified, is that we, like, doubly, triply, quadruply, have no say, no knowledge, no oversight, no anything. So, even if they acquiesce, or whatever, and go to ACM, I feel like, you know, they're still not going to give us money for emergency services, as you said, Attorney Winters, they're still not going to give us any community economic benefits, and God knows what they will be doing at that site, and we will have zero power to push back, which is absolutely terrifying. And I know, you know, they've already treated us horribly. I was at the open house, I know Supervisor Stumbo, you were there, they treated us like criminals from the start, and like fools once we got there. It was embarrassing. I left furious. And not for nothing, there were a lot of people who were genuinely concerned about actually even signing in and registering to leave their identity, because U of M is U of M. And that's terrifying. We shouldn't be living in fear of their surveillance as citizens, you know, living next door, and with a project in the works in our community. So, I'll try to make this brief, I'm probably getting close to my time, but I just want to say that there are so many people that I've been talking to, that I know my community members have been talking to, I'm sure you've been talking to, who are, who are ready to fight this, who want to fight this, who will probably be heartened to hear everything that was said tonight in the resolution. But to the point about, you know, pushing back and getting sued and different things, like, that is truly unfortunate, that is terrifying, we are dealing with a different beast, but I feel like that just is a signifier that we need to get creative. And I would hope you know that, like, you have said, many of you have said, like, you are willing to stand 10 toes down against this. We are too. People are looking for direction. We are cobbling it together on our own, so, like, please let us help each other figure out creative solutions, because we can't let them treat us this way and get away with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, very accurate comments, and it's really important, and I think a lot of the activists that were here in the beginning realize that U of M is the one that's doing this, and the state of Michigan, who gave them the $100 million to do it, and the state laws that are, been passed to encourage this with no, you know, no input from everyday people like us, right? They're just, if they could have just asked the planning professionals, you know, where should this go? If they had input from anybody, I, I do not believe that they would have done this this way. They did it in December of last year, and some of the other legislation was a little bit earlier, but they rushed it through. And whenever you do things in a hurry, you always regret it. And I do think there is some regret. I know State Representative Wilson has been trying his best to help us. He voted for that legislation, but did not realize the impact that it's going to have on the local community. So, just keep pushing, border regents, the governor, state representative, state senate, and we will post on our website and call out for people to help us when we're ready to take it to the next level. I hope they claw back the $100 million. That will be, that'll make a statement to U of M and Los Alamos.
Excuse me, excuse me, I don't, I hope you don't mind me stepping in.
Oh, please.
Unfortunately, I must rebut you on whether the Board of Regents will listen and obey your asks. This is not without precedent that with pressure on the Board of Regents, they have decided to take, albeit a violent route. In this case, the violence is systemic and on your community through the pollution of the environment if they decide to go through with this data center. With regard to South African divestment in the 90s, they brutalized students, they would not listen to students when they said, "We will not have our university invested in South African apartheid." And they have since, again, with the advent of the pro-Palestine movement and the pro-divestment movement within the University of Michigan, have brutalized, beaten, tear-gassed, CS-gassed students on their campus. After many attempts of trying the nice way of standing in front of you and going, "Hi, can we please talk?" They have not talked, they have not bothered to listen, they will steamroll you. I wish, I am heartened by your attitudes of fight, I am, I applaud your efforts, but you are in for a long and protracted struggle. Good luck.
Thank you.
My name is Battle Whitelocke, I'm a community member in the surrounding area.
Okay. So, we have a motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a Resolution 2025-32, which is Establishment of the Township Supervisor 2025 Salary.
2026.
I mean, 2026, sorry.
Whereas according to MCL 41.953, the salary for elected officials shall be determined by the Township Board, and whereas Teamsters TPOAM salaried employees, deputies, and elected officials have a 4% plus longevity budgeted in 2026, now therefore be it resolved that the 2026 salary for the Office of Supervisor, effective January 1st, shall receive an increase of 4% on their annual base salary, going from $99,367 to $103,342, plus longevity, in the amount of $2,734,000, and recognizing the annual car allowance of $6,000 per year since 2018, bringing the total 2026 annual compensation of the supervisor to $112,076. So, moved?
Motion Swanson?
Motion Swanson?
Support.
Support Eldridge. Third discussion. Every year, we are required to adopt the annual salary for the elected officials. We have a motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four is a Resolution Establishing the Township Clerk's Salary for 2026. Treasurer Eldridge, can you?
Yeah. Resolution number 2025-33, establish the 2026 Township Clerk's Salary. Whereas according to MCL 4195, Section 3, the salary for elected officials shall be determined by the Township Board, and whereas Teamsters TPOAM salaried employees, deputies, and elected officials have a 4% increase plus longevity budgeted in 2026, now therefore be it resolved that the 2026 salary for the Office of the Clerk, effective January 1st, shall receive an increase of 4% on their annual salary, going from $99,367 to $103,342, plus longevity, in the amount of $1,550, bringing the total 2026 annual compensation of the clerk to $104,892. I would so move.
Motion Eldridge?
Support Thornton.
Support Thornton. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is a Resolution 2025-34, which is Establishment of the Township Treasurer 2026 Salary. We're taking turns reading this time, because there's so many resolutions. Resolution 2025-34, which is Establishing the 2026 Township Treasurer Salary. Whereas according to MCL 41-95, the salary for elected officials shall be determined by the Township Board, and whereas Teamsters TPOAM salaried employees, deputies, and elected officials have a 4% increase plus longevity, which is budgeted in 2026. Now therefore be it resolved that the 2026 salary for the Office of the Treasurer, effective January 1st, shall receive an increase of 4% on their annual base salary, which is going from $99,367 to $103,342, plus longevity, in the amount of $2,325, bringing total 2026 annual compensation of the treasurer to $105,667. Motion Swanson?
Support.
Support Newman? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next resolution is Resolution 2025-35, which is Establishment of Township Trustee 2026 Salary. We're, are you going to read it?
Yep. Whereas according to MCL 4195.3, the salary for elected officials shall be determined by the Township Board, and whereas Teamsters TPOAM salaried employees, deputies, and elected officials have a 4% increase plus longevity budgeted in 2026, now therefore be it resolved that the 2026 salary for the Office of Township Trustees, effective January 1st, shall receive an increase of 4% on their annual base salary, going from $17,695 to $18,403. So, moved?
Keep moving.
Motion Swanson? Support Eldridge. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2025-36, which is the 2026 Board Meeting Date?
Yep.
The meetings are on the 1st and 3rd Tuesday, at 6 o'clock, January 20th, February 3rd, 17th, March 3rd, March 17th, April 7th, April 21st, May 5th, May 19th, June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, September 5th, October 6th, October 20th, November 17th, December 1st, and December 15th.
Resolution number 2025-36, Adoption of Regular Board Meeting Dates for the 2026 Calendar Year, now therefore be it resolved that the attached schedule of dates and times be adopted for the Charter Township of Ipsilani for 2026 Calendar Year. So, moved?
Motion Swanson?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do you want to do depositories?
Number eight is Resolution 2025-37, Designation of Depositories for 2026. Resolution, are you going to read it?
Yeah. Resolution 2025-37, Designation of Depositories for 2026, now therefore be it resolved that Bank of America, Ipsilani Office, Comerica Bank, Fifth Third Bank, Chase Bank, PNC Bank, Huntington National Bank, Key Bank, True Community Credit Union, JP Morgan Chase, US Bank, and their successors be designated depositories for all Charter Township of Ipsilani Funds and Securities for the 2026 Calendar Year. So, moved.
Motion Eldridge? Support Peterson. Again, we have to adopt these annually. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Resolution 2025-38, which is Adapting Roberts Rules of Order. So, moved?
Adoption of Rules of Order, now therefore be it resolved that Roberts Rules of Order shall be adopted by the Charter Township of Ipsilani Board of Trustees for the 2026 Calendar Year. So, moved.
Support Gloria Peterson.
Motion Eldridge? Support Peterson. Questions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number 10 is the Resolution 2025-39, which is Designation of Newspaper Circulation for 2026. Mark Swanson?
Now therefore be it resolved that? Now therefore be it resolved that Washtenaw Legal and MYVanArbor.com be designated as the Newspapers of General Circulation for the Charter Township of Ipsilani advertisements and publications for the 2026 Calendar Year. So, moved?
Motion Swanson?
Support Thornton.
Support Thornton. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2025-40, which is the 2026 Poverty Exemption. Motion?
Resolution number 2025-40, 2026 Poverty Exemption Guidelines and Application. Whereas the homestead of persons who, in the judgment of the Board of Review by reason of poverty, are unable to contribute to the public charges, is eligible for exemption in part from taxation under Section 7U of the Michigan Property Tax Act, Property, or Public Act 206 of 1893. And whereas pursuant to Section 211.7U, Ipsilani Charter Township, Washtenaw County adopts the following guidelines and application for the Board of Review to implement. The guidelines shall include, but not be limited to, the total combined household income and asset levels of the claimant and all persons residing in the household. To be eligible, a person shall do all of the following on an annual basis. One, be an owner and occupy as a homestead primary resident 100% the property for which an exemption is requested as of tax day, December 31st of the preceding year. File a completed Application for Poverty Exemption Form 5737, with the Board of Review accompanied by federal and state income tax returns for all persons residing in the homestead, including property tax credit returns filed in the current or immediately preceding year, or a Poverty Exemption Affidavit Form 4988 for claimant and all persons residing in the household. Number three, meet the income threshold guidelines, maximum income adopted by the Township Board for the total combined household income of all people living within the house, including all money and gifts contributed to support the members of the household by friends and family. The total combined household income threshold is adopted as that all household income cannot exceed 30% of the median income for Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County, as published by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, as of December 31st of the preceding year. These income thresholds will be used as long as they are higher than the federal poverty guidelines and determined annually by the United States Office of Management and Budget. Four, complete and submit Poverty Exemption Asset Test Form, and meet the maximum asset eligibility test as follows. Assets other than the taxpayer's primary residence, standard mode of transportation, and usual household goods valued at more than $25,000 will be considered and added to the total combined household income to determine eligibility. Due to the PA 253 of 2020, changes to MCL 211.7U, the guidelines will provide for a partial exemption equal to 25% or 50% reduction in taxable value. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Review shall follow the above stated policy guidelines and application in granting or denying exemptions. So, moved?
Motion Swanson?
Support.
Eldridge? Again, we adopt these every year. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12 is Resolution 2025-41, which is a land division of a platted lot. Did you want me to do this? Yes. This is a resolution regarding the division of a platted lot. It authorizes a division of a platted lot in Burbank subdivision, whereas the owner of lots 1213 and the adjacent railway right-of-way of Burbank subdivision has made a request to split a lot previously approved and recorded. And whereas Township Ordinance 2000-243, Article 9, Section 11.01 states that upon the filing of a petition by the owner or owners of all interested therein with the Township Board, the pa- township board, the platted lots, outlot, or parcels of land in existing recorded plats may be petitioned or divided upon resolution of the township board into not more than four parts, each of which will, in regard to width and depth, conform to the terms and provisions of the Charter Township Ipselany Zoning Ordinance, as amended. And whereas the Township Planning Department has reviewed the division and confirmed that the resulting parcels meet the minimum requirements for lot size and road frontage as set forth by Section 2000 of the Township Zoning Ordinance. Therefore be it resolved that the revised property descriptions are approved as listed below in the legal descriptions. Motion to approve the resolution would be in order?
So moved.
Motion Eldridge? Support Newman? Are there any questions in regard to the property split? Deputy assessing, assessor, or deputy assessor, is that the, I have to get my titles right, of the assessing department. Brian is here to answer any questions, and it does, this will create an opportunity to build another house on a vacant lot. We have a motion in support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.